So just a couple of formalities here, since this is our first remote meeting. We are recording this session. It's important that we not use the chat feature. We do have to have everything as part of public records, so we do need to use the video and the audio. So please speak rather than using the chat feature during the meeting. I am going to go ahead and share my screen. Just give me a second while I do that. All right, and we will start with communication items. Can everybody see my screen okay? Okay, perfect. We will start with communication items, and that means Mary, you're up.
Hey, everybody. Good to see your faces. Don't you love the look of the Brady Bunch times four? Okay, first of all, I'd like to commend all of our staff and community for all of their support during this time of change. Our staff has been just amazing with their willingness to learn new things and try to find those resources to meet the needs of our students. They're working together to support each other. They're being student focused, so student-centered learning is becoming a big part of what we do. And our staff is very willing to reflect and change moving forward based upon survey results and feedback from parents and just personal experiences. So definitely a learning curve, and we appreciate our staff for putting themselves out there and not being afraid to take risks. Personally, I'm trying to find ways to interact with staff and students. We have weekly meetings with grade levels and different departments. We have a staff meeting tomorrow. We are continuing with all faculty meetings and all SAT meetings and child study meetings as per our normal calendar. We're just doing them virtually through meetings like this. We have a lot of meals going out from our elementary school. I'm sure Matt will share the number with us later. We currently have 50 PawPacks. We have requests from and are reaching out for two more families by Friday's delivery date. We do home deliveries for three of our families currently. Our team has applied for a foundation, the Painesville Foundation, and Walmart grants to help us support those funds to provide that food service to our families. Back on the home front, we'll begin class list creations for the upcoming school year this week. Our parents have until the 24th of April to fill out those class requests. We are working very hard on scheduling and budgets for next year. So you have any questions for me about what our elementary team is working on? All right, thank you. David?
Hello. I just want to piggyback off of what Mary said about all the staff and teachers and custodians and paraprofessionals and kitchen staff and bus drivers, teachers, students, parents. It's really been a team effort. As we, you know, we'll talk about the distance learning in a little bit, but right now at the high school, at the secondary building, it's business as usual. We're working on budgets and lining up building projects, working on registration. We were very fortunate that all of our students were able to fill out the registration form on paper before we closed the building down. And we had most of our 10th grade through 12th grade, 10th and 11th graders registered online. They were able to do that themselves. And with the help of Cassandra and Amy and Jackie, we were able to put the rest of the students in. So right now, we're looking at the numbers of students who are registering for classes, and we'll work on creating a schedule pretty soon. Daily schedule, we had a schedule committee meeting last week and just talked about what the daily schedule would look like for next year, and that would include the connect time that I had spoken to you about previous. We have had some rumors and misinformation and things on social media and just among people. And so today, I sent an email to all the seniors and their families and really talked about some of the events that affect them as we move towards graduation. Prom and post-prom, obviously prom is going to be, at this point, postponed, and we're going to work with the post-prom committee and come up with, hopefully, some type of a hybrid prom and post-prom. And that would all be, you know, contingent on what the governor is allowing as far as the social distancing. We talked about the Honors Banquet and Back Warrior. Honors Banquet, right now, was supposed to be May 17th. That is going to be on hold. We are still working on a way to honor those students, and also, our plan was to present the dollars for scholars, scholarships during that Honors Banquet. And so we're, it's on hold. We're just kind of seeing where that leads us. I have a meeting tomorrow to talk about Back Warrior and some ideas that the ministerial staff have for that. Graduation, there will be a graduation ceremony on May 31st. What that is going to look like is anybody's guess at this point. We are planning for, you know, a traditional ceremony at this point. We have, we have our students, three students, who are going to be doing the commencement address. Been working with band and choir to make sure that they're working on what they need to, and then now we'll start to look at ideas for an alternative method. But the graduation will be on schedule on May 31st. Caps and gowns came in last week. We're going to be distributing those next week. We're working on the best way to do that. It'll probably be in a variety of ways. We want to make sure that all the students have, have what they need in their, in their package and that everything fits. Our food distribution has been going really well. Today, we had 482 meals that originated out of the secondary building. We are making deliveries to households pretty much daily with, with supplies and, and different things like that. Last week, a couple of our paras delivered a tuba to a student, and today I had a student email and wanted a couple Diary of a Wimpy Kid books. And so we, we just, we have a table set up here with each town, and we put a note on it, and then students will, they'll come tomorrow and pick up any supplies, and we kind of have a pretty good system going that way. So any questions for me?
Matt, what do you got for community end?
Okay, good evening, everybody. As we're all aware, the uncertainty is tough, especially for our business when we're always a season ahead of time. So we are going with summer planning as, as if, as we're hoping to. We are not going to mail out our summer brochure. It's just, that's a big expense. You know, it's $4,000, and we don't know if a lot of things are going to be canceled. And many of our things are youth activities, and we can get the word out through our database and email and social media. So we are going to do a all-online brochure for this summer. ECP, our Emergency Child Care Program, we've been averaging about in the mid-20s each day, and it's fairly equal split between Tier One and Tier Two qualifying employees. So that's a great program for, for our hard-working people that are in the definitely needed positions. So our paras are doing a great job there. Chrissy and Katie, who are in our preschool plus and, and our PAWS program are helping lead that and overseeing it. So they're doing a good job there. That leads to PAWS. We are planning as if we can go for summer, so that's a big program to move. Lots is going to depend on what the governor says and what we can and can't do. Preschool report for next year, we've got two spots in our three-year-old Monday and Wednesday left, one spot in our Tuesday, Thursday, five spots in our Friday only, and we have four spots left in our four-year-old preschool for next year. So numbers are strong there. As you all know, our fitness center is closed. We hope to open up soon. I've had many, many requests for people checking out equipment from the facility. I, of course, have not allowed that. We just, we just can't let the equipment out, but we have lots of people rearing to get back in. And you guys may be aware of, I started a livestream talk show. It's called The Talk, The Talk of Painesville. So we just debuted our first episode last Thursday, and we have almost 700 views already. So really what that is, is just to kind of get the word out, keep communication open, highlight our businesses. We are doing that in partnership with the Chamber. I've got them involved in it, and we're kind of pivoting because we, you know, we have advertisers and we wanted to do our livestream, but our sports are all, you know, postponed for now. We hope those start back up, and we're just trying to keep the word out there. This week, we're trying to do Thursday, a story on distance learning. So we're reaching out for people there. We already have people contacting us about being on our show. Our first show, we had Brandon Peach from the Central Care, and we had Pastor Jim Pritchett on the ministerial. So we're really trying to just keep the, keep the communication going in the community. Any questions for me? Okay, thanks.
Max, you're up.
All right, well, primarily each day for me, at least when there's a school day, I start out the day at the high school in the morning and help get that food program started and the buses loaded. I don't really do a lot with the elementary school site, but at the high school, as you're well aware, there's seven buses that go out to the various locations, and then when they do return, there's a couple of paras that then make deliveries like David referenced. So every day when they come back after the food, satellite food bus programs complete, then people who can't make it to that site or that need other things get delivered. Chromebooks come back as far as for repair if they need to, and then go out the next day. But that doesn't work for everybody, so we do have some home deliveries that, that we consistently do. And then our excellent elementary school principal, Mrs. Mary Holmberg, got in touch with the ALC, and so we have some people that were involved in the ALC now that we're able to get in contact with and get them some food, too. So that's been a good thing. As far as the spring sports being up in the air, the State High School League started a weekly Zoom session that's called LEED, and there was over 400 activities directors on that last Thursday. It's each Thursday, so this coming Thursday will be another one. Last week was primarily just getting the message out about trying to plan for what would be a return to play. The High School League is looking at getting the spring sports started again. The information that they say or the terminology they use is generally specific, so we're trying to plan on what it would look like if we came back to participate, but we don't know what all those details would look like, timeframes, lengths of seasons, or any of that kind of stuff, all these different questions. The High School League is working on a list of questions that our administrative team will need to go through as far as how we feel about, for instance, kids are out of school a lot. If they do come back, then are we going to have spring sports where they get out of school early and have to miss class time, or how are they going to do that? Obviously, things are going to be different from the status quo if they're able to go. There's a whole bunch of bylaws, which are the regulations of the State High School League that come into play. For instance, students that can't get physicals right now, some of them, because the medical situation that we're in prohibits some people from doing some of those types of appointments. Also attendance and other schools that have trimesters and things like that where students potentially are graduated, don't even have school anymore. So there's just a whole host of other things that you don't even think about that come into play as far as the league can't just not operate under the rules that it's founded on. So that's going on. The transition was, I suppose, abrupt and quick for everybody. Kind of the last thing that was going on before we got into this pandemic was the winter sports rending. So I'm just working right now on a way to wrap some of those things up from a distance model and scheduling meetings and things like that. Important thing, or something positive to look forward to on Wednesday night, so that's tomorrow, we will be turning our baseball and football lights on at 8:20 PM, which military time is 20:20, and then they'll be on for 20 minutes and 20 seconds to honor the seniors of the class of 2020. And then Mike Adapa, the technology intern, put together a slideshow of the senior photos for all of the senior class that will play on the video board out on the football scoreboard. And so we will, for those of you who aren't aware with that, it's called Be the Light, Minnesota, and there's, I don't, I lost track of how many people. There's well over 200 stadiums across the state that turn the lights on and do that as a positive thing for the community, and for, a lot of them are doing it to recognize their seniors. So, boy, kind of like Matt, I'm scheduling next year's winter, working on things for this fall, so I feel like I better not have, sit through a pandemic and then not have all my fall schedules ready for next year. So there's just a lot of things. Oh, I did want to mention also, with all the kids doing the distance learning, the Chromebooks that they have are still connected through the school because they're school-managed devices. So we still get emails if they have inappropriate searching on their Chromebooks or viewing videos or something or sending stuff. So we still do get notification for that, so we're able to manage that as well. Other than that, everything else is extremely normal in my world. Any questions?
I have a question, just because you mentioned attendance, and I know another school that I, that I'm familiar with has a daily check-in online. Are we required to do that, or how do we have to take attendance?
Yeah, they're still taking attendance. In fact, I've gotten some emails from instructors, so reaching out, that's, it's not an easy thing. David may be able to answer it better on the high school end, but essentially, they are taking it for the week. David, jump in if I'm incorrect on something, but, so they have to have made some kind of progress, made some kind of connection, done something with, interacting with that teacher in order for them to be counted for attendance for class. Understand that that's different than grading, so it's not necessarily that they turned in all their assignments, because somebody could be in attendance at school for a regular day and not have done any work, and that doesn't mean that they weren't there. So, yeah, it's not an easy one. I think that's something that David and Mary spent a fair amount of time discussing, what that actually looks like, and you have to be flexible with it. But we are tracking attendance on a weekly basis.
So like, we're not required to make sure every kid is checking in daily or anything?
Well, like at the high school and the middle school, they're block scheduling, schedules A, B days, so some of those instructors wouldn't have each student every day anyways. So to my knowledge, they're not checking in with each kid every day. I just got an email today from one instructor that had a handful of students. I checked in with a couple of other instructors and basically just following up with the students that we aren't getting any interaction from. One thing that I think that, that the instructors are finding out is the students are all over the place at the time that they do it, especially, I think, at the secondary, they don't necessarily get up at eight o'clock and start their schoolwork.
More specifically, Ashley, there isn't a, a state requirement with distance learning as far as attendance. Attendance is something that each district needs to come up with a plan for and then needs to implement it across the board for all students. What Painesville is implementing is, rather than taking daily attendance for every class, it is an attendance for the week that students are documenting some form of progress and interaction in their classes. So it is not a daily attendance requirement or anything like that. Districts are kind of all over the board how they're, how they're doing attendance. There's, I've heard of probably at least maybe 10 or 12 different models that, that are being implemented. Any other questions for Max? All right, seeing none, let's go to Donnie. Is, Donnie moved on my screen, so I went to look for you, and you weren't in the same place. Go ahead, Donnie.
Hello, everyone. Well, it's kind of nice that there is no kids in school. We had a little trouble on heating loop at the middle school. We sprung a leak, and it's progressively got worse, so we have Yule out the last two days fixing the leak, and we're in the process of filling the whole line back up again, and it should be going again tomorrow. Other things happening, the custodial staff is emptying out classrooms. We've started waxing floors. The high school locker room is actually done. All the floors have been cleaned and waxed. The maintenance personnel is unboltin' equipment in the shops, and they started moving some of it over to the van garage today. There's a lot more equipment than we thought, so we're hoping we'll have enough room out there. And I think most of the, like, the books and a lot of the wood shelving and stuff, maybe will be moved to different classrooms or something. We'll have to see how it goes. I had two roofing companies out today up on the roof after it quit snowing, and just taking pictures, and we have bid opening next Tuesday for the roofing project. Other than that, I think we're just going to keep plugging away at rooms and shops. Any questions for me? All right. Thank you.
All right, we will move on then to, I believe the next item here is distance learning. One second here, I need to... All right, let's see here, distancing. I know, Mary and David, you talked a little bit about this, but maybe if each of you could just give, you know, three or four minutes, kind of what's going on with distance learning specifically for board, the board members, and then potentially, I think there might be some questions for you as well. Mary or David, who wants to start?
Pick me.
Mary, let's start.
Thank you. So like I said before, staff have been really flexible. It's really nice to see our staff working together no matter the assignment. So we began this process by reaching out to families. We took the survey that was sent out and had our paraprofessionals work with our office administrative assistants to contact families who hadn't gotten in touch with us. And then we reached out to families who needed PawPacks to make sure those were being delivered to the proper place each week. We have lots of check-ins going on in classes at the elementary level. That ranges from morning meetings to class meetings to submitting evidence of learning. And then, Ashley, you had a question about attendance. That's how we take attendance at the elementary level. So we know that kids are participating when they're, that they're being active when they participate in those or when they submit their assignments. We're sending out birthday emails. We're, we're working with David and our high school peer mentor program to connect some of our kiddos that might need a little more help in some areas with some high school peer mentors, and I think David will talk some more about that in a little bit. So the directive when all this began was to find a balance. First of all, the focus on that is social, emotional well-being of our students and our families. And then when we start to focus on the content, the question is why? What are we doing? What standards do we want to meet? So let's get down to the nitty-gritty of what we have left to do this year, which brings us to what we've already talked about, that student-centered learning and how do we learn? We're really finding that our kids have a large variation from that traditional textbook to doing everything digitally with the different tools and resources that we have. Some families have a really good routine at home, others don't have a routine at home. So this is a good time for us to be able to figure out a blend that works, works for all of our kiddos and their families. We're working hard on finding ways to celebrate the things that are going on in our homes and in our classrooms through Google Meets, Moors, Seesaw, Flipgrid, and we're just still trying to figure out how we can best support our families. Our paraprofessionals are working really hard at helping us out with PawPacks, meal distribution, the Emergency Child Care Program. We've got them working with teachers to connect with families and to connect with individual kiddos. So if it's been a few days and we haven't heard from a student, we may reach out to a paraprofessional and say, hey, can you reach out to this child and see what's going on and what else we can do? Our pairs are recording audiobooks, they're recording math practice, they're recording phonics lessons. Our IEP meetings are continuing via Google Meetings, just like we're doing right now. There's just a lot going on that has to do with how we can reach every child and make sure that no one's left behind. We continue to have those grade level and staff meetings as we always have, and we're just making adjustments as we go. Tomorrow's faculty meeting, we'll talk about all those things, and then we'll also talk a little bit about self-care to make sure that our employees are okay, too, because it's, it's stressful for everybody, and so, and we can't be very productive if we're not taking care of ourselves. So we're trying to meet the needs of every junior bulldog, student and family that we have. That was a lot in a little bit of time. Do you have questions for me?
I guess I have kind of a question to follow up on what Bruce was talking about last time. Has anybody been having problems with how much internet this is taking? Because I've got, I got four kids, and they're, every two days, they're going through like 17 to 20-some gigabytes of, of data. And if you're paying by the gigabyte, oh my gosh. And they're, and they're not, like, sitting there all day. It's just all these, all these video things and everything take up, and if they have to watch video presentations and, you know, it takes up a lot. But has anybody else been having, I'm kind of out in the middle of nowhere, so.
No, that's a great question, and that's a valid one that we've heard from families. What we're finding is that some companies are increasing that data amount for their families. We know the hotspots that we're delivering here at school are going to have some increased data. We've encouraged our staff to be cognizant when they're preparing these lessons of, is this something that I could just do auditorially, auditorially, so that they don't have to have that video piece because it is the video, video that takes up so much of that data? And then to reassure their families and remind kiddos, hey, you might really like to see me read that book or have my beard shaved, but you don't need to watch it five and six times if we're going to be really aware of that data usage.
Yeah, and up here, we, we're keeping an eye on it. We are looking at different alternatives. One thing that we gave out to staff on Monday was a link to do podcasts instead of, instead of the video, and that uses up about a third of the bandwidth. So hopefully, we can get a, we can continue to streamline it as we go. Jonah and Garrick have been really good about keeping everybody updated with, with issues that they're seeing, and, and so, yeah, we'll continue to watch it. David, do you have anything else specifically for the secondary school regarding distance learning?
I do. You know, like Mary said, it's, it's, we're working on a student-centered, you know, curriculum, and our, when I met with all of the departments last Thursday, we did 15-minute check-ins, and what I wanted them to think about over the weekend was equity and what, what that means in their classroom and in what they're teaching, and is 30 minutes for, you know, a student who understands what's going on the same as 30 minutes for a student who's struggling, and how can they make that equitable? And really just being flexible, showing empathy, and really, you know, it's okay that one of the days a week, they're just, they're just checking into, with students to see how they're doing. And, you know, we really want that mental health piece to be front and center, and in a lot of ways, is, that's really more important than some of the academic things that we're trying to get in. So we are, we are meeting weekly with departments, and we're continuing to just brainstorm ideas, and we're, we are getting a list of students who aren't engaged. And so, you know, Max has made some contact with students, I've made some contact, and what we're really trying to do is, you know, the teachers are really responsible for making sure that if, if a student isn't engaged and isn't logging in, that they're contacting the parents and they're making phone calls. That they're contacting the parents and they're making phone calls and, and really, I have been really impressed with. The number of students that, that we are. Trying to get engaged is very low considering. Us being in a rural area and we're, we're spread out and then different, different things come into play, different stressors. We are, we have two. Two students who graduated last year. Who are offering tutoring services in high school math and high school English. And so that information was, was given to families last week. We have four current seniors who are offering tutoring services for middle school students and we have. Some families that have contacted, that contacted Jackie Campbell today and are interested in getting set up with a tutor. So. We're, we're hoping that that can be a really great way to make connections with our middle school students. And then we have, we have peer mentors that had been spending time at the elementary. And we're, we are on a voluntary basis. Starting to put those students in touch with elementary students. And so. We're hoping that we can, we can get. Teacher recommendations and have our high school students that would call elementary students once a week and, or email them or. Video chat with them just to see how they're doing and give them some encouragement and, and something from, from a high school student. So that's pretty cool. Last week we did a school spirit day and we had. A whole bunch of students and a few teachers who submitted their pictures with showing their school spirit and we. Had two winners and we, we gave away a couple of Amazon gift cards and. And. We'll continue to try to come up with a few ideas to get students and staff involved. We are. We're really concerned about our, our seniors and, you know, the, the activities in the, in the last couple of months of the school year should be. Really exciting and, and it's just, we're looking for some clarity in all of this. Their last day is going to be May twenty second. And Mrs. Campbell is checking in with all of the seniors. As much on a regular basis as she can. She was out of, out of the office for a while. Her father passed away and so. We welcome her back. And then she's working, making sure that she's connecting with students, taking online courses and PSEO classes. And just making sure that, you know, they're, they're aware of what they need to do to continue to do. And then tomorrow we are meeting with all of the teachers who have seniors in, in class and just kind of go over. What that process looks like and, and making sure that, that all of those teachers are communicating with Jackie on a regular basis. I think that's about it. Any questions for me?
I would love to hear from Paige and Ashley and like especially Ashley as a senior, I would just love to hear from your perspective. Kind of like David said, I mean, our hearts are with all you, especially the seniors and I just think it's important to hear from, from the students.
I mean, it's definitely hard, like it's a lot harder. Doing this and not getting to see people every day. And I mean, it's, it's especially really hard because. Like. It's not so bad here, you know, like there aren't that many cases. So then it's just like frustrating because. Like you know, you have to stay home, but then at the same time you're like, I don't know. Anyone that has COVID, you know, and so like you really want to go be with your friends and you want to do stuff because. I mean, some people, if they're going, you know, to college out of state, they're going to be gone. Like in June or July. And so it's just hard, but. I mean, I've been taking like PSEO classes and stuff like that already. So. The online portion of it isn't. So difficult. But yeah, it's definitely hard missing out on all the things and. I guess there's just a lot of questions and you hope that no stuff can. Play out the way that it was planned, but. Well, I guess we just take what we can get. And I mean, that's kind of what. I know for stats, like we have our Google chat thing. And. I mean, a lot of our, like the seniors were like, well, you know, this isn't the way that we would like to be doing things, but really there's no other option. So. It is what it is, I guess.
Paige, do you have anything to add?
Um, yeah, it's just really hard to like communicate with some of the teachers, like it's hard to like communicate and like try to like. Like for my English teacher, like Miss Landa, I was an English teacher and I have two classes with her and it's like. She's like, I'm trying to get this stuff out to you guys and like we have, we're doing this proposal and it's like, okay, it's hard for her to like. Explain stuff to us as one at a time or like at once instead of like five times to like each kid. But yeah, it's, it's really hard, like Ashley said. But I mean, I like it, I'm kind of used to it a little bit because I've. There's some, like, most of the stuff is online already through Google Classroom and stuff, but. It is really hard. And I mean, I miss seeing my friends and going out and talking to people and, yeah, so it is hard.
Another thing I was going to say too is, like a lot of times. Like I was used to, you know, having the schedule and having to be in these classes at certain times. And that's like the one thing that I've kind of. Had some issue with. So like, since I had like my online classes and like school to work, stuff like that, you know, that's in the afternoon. So I was able to go to work. So like now I, I work at the credit union. So like I'm still working. And now like they say, oh, we're going to have a Google meet, you know, on Friday at. Two o'clock and it's like, well, I have to work at one thirty. So like it's kind of hard. Like, because normally I would be able, you know, to be in my class because it was second block. And I just kind of wish that. They were sticking more to like their scheduled class times, but then at the same time. Like they said before, I understand that not every kid wakes up at eight o'clock. I mean, my sister for one rolls out of bed like just in time to go to some of her Google meets. So I get that that's not realistic for everyone, but it's just kind of frustrating when things like that. Do occur that it messes up your normal like daily schedule, I guess.
Yeah, I definitely agree with Ashley. Like sometimes I'm like, oh goodness, like I'm busy and then I'm like, oh, I have a Google meet. I just wish like all the teachers would say. Okay, we're having like on our set times and say, let's have a Google meet and then like some, like chemistry redo every other day. But then he does it at like ten AM and that's not our like normal class time. So I just wish all the teachers would do like Google meets and maybe help more. I don't know, but yeah, it's just, it's really hard.
Any other questions?
I just had one quick question for Mary and David. We worried about kiddos that didn't have internet at home. And I know there were some that were driving into town to do schoolwork, sitting outside of McDonald's in the schools. Has that been addressed or is there, is there any problem with it?
Well, yeah, we, we knew that there would be some issues going into it. What we've tried to do. Even so, the families that didn't complete the survey, then so we, we made sure that we called all of those families. And we try our best to communicate with them and let them know about the programs that some of the. The internet companies have, the availability of hotspots. You know, we, I think that. We've, we've worked really hard to create those connections, but I, I'm sure that there are some that students that are still having some issues.
We do that too with our check-ins. I think I've been in contact with three or four families that we hadn't heard from till last Thursday. And so we're just doing everything we can to reach out to them and we made contact with every family at the elementary school. And just encourage them to let us know if they're having those issues. And at this point, I, I think that all of them have been resolved. Of course, you know, we're at the middle of the month now, so things might change this next week when data runs short, but we'll address that when we get there.
Any other questions regarding distance learning? And I just wanted to talk just a little bit then about the, kind of where things are at with the governor's. Shelter at home order and the such. There is still no word as far as what is going to happen with schools come May fourth. May fifth actually is the day that students would be back in school. So right now we are continuing to work under that plan that on May fifth, we will have students back. The governor did have a news conference, I believe it was last week. The last question of the news conference pertained to schools and I forget who it was that asked if students would be back in school yet this spring. And the governor did not give a, a real. Positive outlook on that. His, his. Statement, I believe, was something along the lines of that he sees it as a slim possibility that students would be back. So there has been no official announcement. We will keep working as to have students back in our buildings on May fifth. We are continuing with commencement. There is going to be commencement in Painesville, like David said. What commencement is going to look like will be completely dependent on what we can and cannot do. It could range from the exact same as what it's been in the past to something very different, but we are going to have commencement. The other, the only other thing I would just like to make sure that all board members. Understand that if people have questions regarding. Distance learning or something with school, the best place to reach out for those questions is to the building principals. There have been, I think that's the one thing that has really. Gives me a sense of pride of what we're trying to do. I don't know that there have been, there has yet been a request that we have received that the answer's been no to. I think just about every request of families, of circumstances, of whatever it is that is unique to each individual that people have been asking. We have found a way to be able to accommodate that. And we are going to continue to make that very important, that, that is something we want to hang our hat on is we are going to be able to try and meet everybody's needs. So it's discouraging when people email me threads on, on life in Painesville and other social media sites. And I just can't encourage people enough. If you want factual information, let's go and ask the source and, and move forward from there. Because there's, there's very few things that we can accomplish if people are willing to just reach out and ask some questions and. I know there's a bunch of creative ways to get, get to solutions. So that's kind of where we're at. I'm sure either this, I would think this week, we would probably hear some more direction regarding what the governor's thoughts or the commissioner's thoughts are on school. So we'll wait to hear that and, and once we know, we will get more information out to everybody. Questions regarding any distance learning or COVID nineteen or the world that we now know? Alright, I'm seeing none. So that means let's move forward to the 2020, 2021 budget information. I did include the link to the, the agenda earlier this afternoon. There's also a document that's titled 2020, 2021 budget update in your drive. And it should be on my screen now. So this is just going to continue to be a document. If you remember, this document should look familiar because this is what we looked at when we were at the March twenty fourth conversation. If we go to page two. You will see kind of where things are at as of today. Excuse me. I will kind of run through this and then as soon as I'm done, we'll have discussion and, and I'll open for conversations. So again, all that, that preliminary budget forecast for our general fund, that is exactly the same. If we just roll everything forward, what we're looking at for 2021 is a revenue of eight point six million. Expenditures of about eight point four six million for a difference of a budget surplus of a hundred and forty two thousand, eight hundred and forty one dollars. You can see then what that does to our fund balance, which would be one point nine five million. We talked about in March, at the end of March, some proposed additions. One of them is the addition of increasing our work experience teacher. Right now that person is half time. We would like to increase that person to full time. We would also like to put things in place to be able to start moving the needle on social emotional learning. And really have a coordinated effort district wide. Right now we're having conversations of calling this kind of like a school social worker hybrid. Mary and David and I have talked about maybe it's a social emotional learning coordinator. But this would be a person who would really oversee this social emotional learning piece and really coordinate with classroom teachers. As to what's going to happen with our very youngest learners in preschool, all the way up to our oldest learners at the senior high level. So when we, those are really the, the nuts and bolts of the, the additions. Obviously what's not on here this time is our social studies position. I don't view that as an addition because it's just simply a replacement of a existing staff member who's retiring. We would rehire that position, but I'm not viewing that as a additional programming or additional services. That would be accessible for students or families. So what do we have to do to accomplish those additions? There's really five items. And the first one is because we're taking our work experience teacher and increasing that position from a point five FTE to full time. This creates the point five FTE of a case manager position that that person would vacate. So we would need a point five case manager at the secondary school. We would accomplish this and fill this position by reorganizing our existing personnel. The second one would be to add that school social worker hybrid position. Again, we feel we can accomplish that, that addition by reorganizing our existing personnel. We would also bring in Doctor's Park Medical Services for Mental Health Services. This would be a cost neutral move and the reason it'd be cost neutral is because we would continue to use. Our revenue from the Stearns County Family Services Collaborative, just like we are right now for our school-based mental health services through True Balance. We would need to add a point five FTE ECSE teacher. The reason why we would have to add this is because when we do the reorganization. What ends up happening is the point five FTE case manager that vacates an ECSE position. We would also then need to hire a point five FTE special ed assessment specialist. The reason we would be looking at hiring this one would be because when we employ this social emotional learning coordinator or this school, social worker hybrid position. That is going to vacate our current person who's doing special education assessments. So when you look at costs. What is it that we're looking at that are new costs for the school district? So number one, the point five FTE case manager at the secondary school, that's reorganization. Someone's already on staff, so there's zero new cost to the district. Number two, adding that social worker hybrid, again, it's a reorganizational move. So again, it's zero cost to the school district on that. Number three, onboard Doctor's Park Medical Services, that's simply switching providers. We're currently accessing grant funding, we would continue, so that's a zero cost. You look at adding the point five ECSE teacher and the point five special education assessment specialist. And that point five cost is about that twenty seven two thirty seven, twenty seven thousand, two hundred and thirty seven dollars for each of those. For a total, if we would do everything, what those new costs would be, would be fifty four thousand, four hundred and seventy four dollars. So then we have some other items that are happening. We talked about it in March, we know we have a social studies retirement, that rehire is going to happen. But we are anticipating that we would save just over fifteen thousand dollars for, for that position. And then we also have a district office retirement. Again, we're going to need to do a rehire for that position, but we would anticipate. About eleven thousand, five hundred dollars in savings. So our total savings due to retirements or attrition is going to be twenty six thousand, six eighty seven. When you subtract those from our costs of fifty four thousand, four seventy four. You have the net planned additions would cost us twenty seven thousand, seven hundred and eighty seven dollars. Okay, that's what we know sitting here today. Everything that I've talked about today. Up to this point is stuff that we know and we're very confident in being able to budget those and cost those out. And we have some other things that are still moving targets. So first of all is the question about kindergarten. We have eighty four students that Mary is inviting to kindergarten roundup. That's a good number. I'm really hopeful that we can get between seventy five. That's a, a good number. Um, I'm really hopeful that we can get between seventy five and eighty of them to come through our doors for the first day of kindergarten. Um, the flip side to that coin is going to be if we get seventy five to eighty kindergartners, we're going to need four sections of kindergarten. Three sections just simply probably is not going to cut it. So if we would have four sections of kindergarten, this now has a ripple effect. We have already talked about administratively and we talked about it at March twenty fourth. Our second graders, they started kindergarten, if you remember back several, three years ago, they started kindergarten, I believe with forty nine students. They are up um, now at fifty nine, I believe. And Mary, can you just chime in? Is that a, I hate to put you on the spot, but is that a, a good number? It's a fifty nine or fifty seven? Fifty seven? Okay, it's fifty seven. Um, so, excuse me, I'm on the wrong page, sorry. So in order, once those numbers began creeping up, we added a third section or a third teacher in second grade. The plan right now is to roll them forward as third graders with three sections as well. So this ripple effect becomes as we start adding sections, we're going to start running into some problems with specials. Right now, our classroom music position is pretty much tapped out with all of the classroom music that needs to happen for um, K five. And so when you start adding another section of third grade, an additional section of kindergarten, Now you're starting to run into, we just simply don't have time for with our, our music teacher for classroom music. So depending on what we end up with in kindergarten, reality is we are probably Going to be looking at hiring the, or adding a point two FTE in music. I'm putting this last statement on here for number two, says this may require the addition of. I think the board needs to understand that the reality of that is pretty high. This also creates the same ripple effect in uh, physical education. When you start adding another kindergarten section, another third grade section, we run into the same problem. Our PE teacher at the elementary school simply is already full. We don't have um, additional time for that person to take on those additional sections. The nice thing is though, we have some ability with our staff. We can do some reorganization of current staff members to cover that um, addition. So we wouldn't be looking at adding any um, physical education uh, teaching time. So those are moving targets. When we look at the cost to that, what is it potentially cost us to address those moving targets? Uh, the first one would be that uh, full-time kindergarten teacher. That cost would be fifty four thousand four seventy three. Um, a point two FTE in music would be about ninety five hundred dollars. And then the PE uh, issue would be zero. It would be a reorganization. And so there wouldn't be uh, new personnel hired for that. So the total moving items out there Is about sixty three thousand nine seventy three. So now this is the updated bottom line. If we did all of this, so if we did the increase in work experience time, If we did the social emotional learning piece, if we add the fourth section of kindergarten, if we add the point two music, If we do all of those things, we would be looking at a total budget for general fund only now. Our revenue stays the same, eight million six hundred nine thousand. Our expenditures would now be eight million five hundred and fifty eight thousand and change Um, for a difference of about a fifty one thousand dollar budget surplus. Uh, fast forward that to what that would do over the term of a year and our fund balance would end up at one point eight six billion dollars. So as we sit here today on April fourteenth, this is where the thinking is. This is kind of what we're, we are looking at. Um, and I guess at this point, I would open it up uh, to any questions uh, regarding um, Any of, of this.
So, um, as I looked at it earlier, Um, couple of things that first group I think is important. I, looks like it's real thoughtful from administration On what we need to do in those. The second part, and I almost have to control my excitement. When we have to hire instructors, when I got on the school board, My whole goal was to try and get us to a point where we had to hire instructors. And it is a great thing because that means that we're growing. So I have to say, um, Heads up for everybody and well done that we're in a position that our school is on a growth path. I wasn't sure it was going to come. I was on the first five years and we were dropping ten fifteen students every year. And when I ran for my second uh, time on the school board, people asked me about it and I said, well, Look at the school population and tell me if I did a good job. Cause that didn't say we did a good job. We were just losing. So we have a lot of stuff going on. We have a lot of moving parts. I think it's because we're open-minded That we're looking at the future and I think people are recognizing that I'm really excited about that. Hiring, having a, a little bit of a budget usage to hire an instructor, is I think exactly what we're supposed to be here for.
Other thoughts or questions that board members might have? Go ahead, Ashley.
I have a question, um, regarding um, the music. Is there any room for discussion on adding like an art? Maybe rearranging budget or ti- and or time with the music so that there's an dedicated art teacher? Or is that not a, a possibility? I mean in elementary?
Mary, do you want to visit about that?
Sure, that's a great question, Ashley, and I appreciate you asking that. Um, at this time, I'll be quite honest, we would not have the space for an art teacher per se. Um, that is something that we can look at in the future. Right now we have three sections or three days where the kids have music and three days where the kids have FIDE and then they get a day of STEAM And a day of media. Um, and so we could, we could look at that moving forward, but space would be our only issue. We're, we're kind of busting at the seams right now.
And I was just going to echo that. I, I don't know, the, the answer is yes, absolutely. You can have an art specialist as part of your special rotations in, In the elementary school. So it has nothing to do with, is it, is it feasible? Um, we just don't have any space to actually have an art classroom. Um, now, the other thing that's going to happen, remember, is the district office is going to be evicted. And um, once the building project is complete, the district office will be moving over to the secondary building. Um, obviously I think we have a, a priority and a need for early learning space and, and that's something that the district has been Impacted by the last um, year or so. So I think that needs to, to be a part of a solution. But I don't necessarily know that um, ruling out uh, something else with that space too, um, could be a possibility. But yeah, to me, I was, I can just echo Mary's uh, comment. It's not necessarily the, the logistics of, of hiring an art teacher. Yes, that's a possibility. Right now, the bigger issue is the space. The reality is, once we go to four sections of kindergarten, and I really do believe We will have between seventy five and eighty kindergarten students. So I am planning that we are going to need to be hiring a kindergarten teacher. Once we go to that model, The next thing we're going to need to do is get portables. Because we do not have an open classroom. And so if things would continue and we see more Um, unexpected en- enrollment, whether it be in second grade or third grade or whatever, wherever it is, We don't have the luxury of really having an open classroom to be able to um, expand Or to take uh, another class that, and, and add a section. So that's um, a, a real issue as well For the, our elementary building. Other questions? Okay, I'm not seeing any questions, so I'm going to assume there aren't any. Um, just want to make sure that the board understands, again, this is just kind of a snapshot of where the thinking is right now. And we will continue working on this and things will get flushed out some more. Um, I did uh, share kind of a timeline with the budget process for the board. Uh, so you guys will, will see this again um, in, excuse me, in uh, May. And well, the focus from here will really be looking at uh, facilities and building projects and the such. Um, our admin team is working on uh, kind of finalizing what that's going to look like as far as an administrative recommendation for the board. Um, and then we'll, we'll get that off. Um, Donnie did uh, talk a, a little bit in his time about a roofing project. Um, I do have a hundred and twenty five thousand dollars earmarked for him To just continue with another segment of roof in the district this summer. Um, so that is going to happen and in order to get us in line with work and everything, We, we need to, to have that stuff going now in order to get bids and be able to have the, the Board approve bids and stuff in a timely manner so we can get scheduled for the summer. But kind of shifting as we go, um, starting in May now, the board's going to start seeing more of the Um, buildings and grounds and long-term facility maintenance and projects, summer projects type, budgeting items. Um, with the intent then to have the board approve the preliminary budget for next year at the June twenty third. I believe it's June twenty third, June twenty third board meeting. Any other questions on budgeting? Okay, let's keep moving. Um, so the next item on is uh, West Central Ed Technology Discussion. And I will then turn this over to Maggie.
Alright, um, one thing we kind of brought this up at the last meeting is our last West Central Ed meeting. Um, the discussion was there are not enough devices for all their students. And the question was brought up, Would districts who are going to be recycling through their next, I guess, cycle of Chromebooks or whatever devices they're using, would there be an option That these schools could um, either sell or whatever would be to West Central Ed? Um, and we had our district technology meeting, I believe, last week. And we're going to be recycling through some this summer. And so Just bringing the conversation to the board, um, being we are, you know, a fourth ownership, I guess, in the, a district. And if they do go through initiative, we're going to be paying for devices. Would it make sense at this time to consider, I'm looking at the devices That potentially, I think it's the eighth graders would be using because they only would have used them one year. Cause I believe in ninth grade, everybody gets a new device. I think that's correct. Um, because we also don't want to give them like old and abused devices, but if they could be the newest ones And that we would be recycling or looking at something like that, um, kind of what the board's thoughts are on that. Matt, do you want to add anything to that or?
I don't understand.
Go ahead, Ashley.
Don't the eighth graders have the same Chromebooks that they've had since sixth grade?
They do, but I believe they turn them in and get new ones in ninth grade. Is that correct?
Right, but then it, they would be like four years old already. By the time you would use them again, sixth, seventh, eighth grade and then, or, or do they get new ones every year? I don't know, I should, should have probably checked with my kids.
I should double, David, maybe her.
We get, they get a Chromebook at sixth grade, they turn it back in after eighth grade and then they get a, a different Issue to them at ninth grade with the hope that that Chromebook lasts them their uh, senior high time with us.
So this would be, this would be A four-year-old technology anyway.
Two. They get it in sixth grade.
So they use it sixth, seventh, eighth grade and then somebody else would use it the fourth year. So is there a, is there a whole lot of value to those at that point?
It all depends. Um, I have a Chromebook that's about eight years old at home. And it, it works As good as my kids' Chromebooks do from school. Um, it, it depends on what you, what you want to do with it and what you, what you're trying to accomplish. Um, if you're talking about stuff that is strictly in Google Classroom and Google Apps, uh, yes. If you're um, talking about going and, and uh, browsing the internet and watching um, high resolution videos and stuff, You're not going to want to use my old Chromebook to, to do that. Um, so are they end of life at the end of uh, using three years in, in middle school? No, I think they still have some use left in them. Uh, do they have as much use as a new Chromebook? Of course not. They don't. Um, but I think that's the other piece too, that as we continue this conversation. Um, one, I would hope as a, a co-owner or a part owner in West Central Ed, That we could just develop a model that we would be able to accommodate a portion of West Central Ed devices At, in our device replacement. Um, so that when we do bring in new devices, That we would have uh, new devices to be able to issue to West Central Ed as well. Um, I think that would be the ideal model. Now, to give you a perspective of students, you know, the, the ALC runs anywhere from um, thirty to forty students. Uh, Beacon is usually hovers in the twelve to fifteen students. And, and I don't necessarily know how many of those students would use a device in the Beacon program or not. Um, so we're not talking about large numbers of devices. Uh, you're probably talking about fewer than seventy devices total. When you start looking at that and, and start thinking of the four school districts being a partner to be able to, To figure out how are we going to accomplish this, I think it actually could be um, pretty simple. Um, in the ideal world though, what I would like to see is where are those other three districts at with device replacement? And then um, how do we incorporate a portion of West Central Ed into all four member school districts replacement schedule? The main issue, the problem that I see with that is, um, I believe it is Painesville and Albany are one-to-one. And Maggie, help me out if I misspeak, but there, I believe there are two districts that are more one-to-one. And then there are two districts that are not. Maggie?
Yeah, um, that is, I believe, correct. I don't know which districts, but that is the thing, not all of them are one-to-one. And so what we're trying to figure out is how do we have equity with our students That are going to West Central Ed and they aren't part of this one-to-one initiative. And so we're just trying to think of different ways That we can make sure that they have devices available to them and whether to incorporate them into our plan. Um, like Matt said, not all the districts have that one-to-one initiative, but I, I think we just need to figure out a solution because to me, it's not okay that They have students who don't have devices. Um, but I did get an update from Lori, Lori. And um, they said, right now there's forty students enrolled at the ALC and thirty eight Are using a Chromebook and six of them are using their own devices and thirty two are provided by West Central Ed. And two are doing just paper and pencil right now and are waiting devices um, and access. Um, the Beacon program, um, they were all sent like a package that included a, a Chromebook as well. Um, so I'm not sure where they're kind of scrapping these up from because the last meeting we had, it didn't sound like they were going to have enough, but they've Seemed to come together right now, but I don't think that's a long-term um, strategic plan, kind of pulling it together.
And again, tonight, there doesn't need to be any decisions or anything, but I just want the board to start thinking about this. Um, I really think it is important that Painesville remembers we are a quarter owner of West Central Ed. And I think sometimes it's really simple. They're not always front burner right in front of our, our faces. And so it can be easy um, without intention to, to just um, overlook or, or, or forget to, to remember That, that portion of, of our um, district and our, our students. And so Um, we are, it's going to be a recurring conversation. Don't be surprised uh, if this summer or early fall, We are back at the table talking about how it is we can um, be a, a responsible member of, of West Central Ed And incorporate that uh, device piece into um, uh, the future of Painesville Schools and West Central Ed. Anything to add, Maggie?
I can just add, um, both Lori and Tara provided a few more updates, just to, I was curious to learn like what, how their um, distance learning is going. Um, and they said for the ALC that teachers are also using Google Classroom um, and Zoom. They are trying to teach more of the live to maintain those connections with the students. And they're really prioritizing the relationships and support. I said they're doing lots of wake-up calls. Um, numerous, just like phone calls, texting, um, remind messages, they're sending out care packages. They're even doing things like virtual walks with their students. They're just trying to find creative ways to maintain that connection. Um, another thing is um, thanks to like the member districts like Painesville, They're getting lunches and breakfasts to these students and they're also um, recently implementing some weekend food options. And they're also partnering with, I believe it's Ruby's Pantry and Sock Center. And they're also partnering with, I believe it's Ruby's Pantry and Sock Center. And also some local food shelves. The birth to three program, they're doing virtual visits, phone visits. School psychologists are assisting with the special ed teachers in each member district. The OT and PT, so they had a big concern about this, like how do you do that virtually? But they're continuing regular contact with families, they're sending materials through the district's material distribution systems. They're doing everything they can. Some are meeting with families, maintaining social distancing, but they're still going into homes. So I'm not quite certain how that, how they're doing that, but they are, but they're following the guidelines. Overall, they said it's going much better than they anticipated, but there are definitely some bumps in the road. They said there are families like with pre-existing mental health issues and now they're trying to handle other, you know, kids being at home, online, learning, homework. So there are definitely some tough situations, but they are definitely learning a lot and trying, just like our teachers try new things, trying to figure it out. But their main thing is just trying to maintain that contact with their students.
Excellent. Any other questions regarding West Central Ed? All right, let's move on to the last item then. We have requests for information roundtable, and I think this is our opportunity to get back to MSBA Leadership Conference, which seems like it was a long, long time ago in a whole different world than, than where we are today. But I will kind of turn this over to board members. What do you have? Where are you at? Anything with MSBA? Or maybe we could just go around the, the horn here and, and see if we have. I'll start with Drew.
So I'm going to just, I've been real quick. A lot of times, we started this just so we told people what we did there. Just for myself this year, I attended a fair amount on strategic planning and superintendent's reviews. Because I believe they should be blended in. And I ended up going to roundtables where I didn't actually move the table. And what I found was every time I stayed at the same discussion table, it was a different meeting, but over similar content, but a lot more input from the schools. So I spent most of my time on those. Then I was, spent a fair amount of time in some of the bidding and all of that kind of thing because we were actively involved in getting the, that kind of stuff all set. And that's pretty much what I have. So I'll just pass it on. Let's go one at a time. Whoever's next.
I can go next. I try to attend a variety of that sessions. The one that I'm kind of laughing at reading was the legislative session because I'm sure that's all changed because they were talking about a surplus. I'm guessing that's not going to happen. But some interesting things they talked about was on this past year, eighty-eight percent of the levies passed and they said that's the best since 2015. And what they were saying is that's really showing that most of Minnesota is understanding that the state has not kept up with where they need to be funding schools, that people are realizing we need to pass these because our schools are not having enough to maintain and to grow. So that was a positive that people are realizing that. One of the things on the, that there really wanted increases the LTFM cap and more flexibility. Again, a lot of talk about the students' survey results, which I know has been shared in past board meetings. That's distributed every three years and over a hundred thousand students participate in it and it's volunteering anonymous. And again, one of the big things that was talked about was mental health issues and vaping. And with mental health, they said twenty-three percent of students have reported issues. And which was really alarming, and I wrote this down and I'll have to double check this, was that one in four students have thought about suicide in the eleventh grade. And so I'm really thankful that our district, as we talk about the initiatives that we're taking on, that this is extremely important. The surveys are showing that this is a big issue. And I feel like our district is taking this seriously. It talked a lot about the formula, wanting to get a one percent increase per pupil. Again, I am super curious to see what's even going to happen, are these things even going to be touched with everything that's going on right now? They talked a lot about local control, the MSBA really pushing that. We have local control over our curriculum, trying to move away from so many mandates. The talk of raising e-learning days from five to ten. Again, I went to a couple more on some mental health partnerships, what different districts are doing, partnering with different hospitals. And there's just lots of information. Basically, there needs to be a lot of training. It's a big issue and it needs to be a big part of our system. I went to a couple of special education sessions. And then I also attended a few that were put on by the MSBA on developing a gender-inclusive policy. And this, again, a lot of it stemmed from the Minnesota survey, so it's database. So like what our data is telling us from that survey is eighty-three point seven percent of our transgender youth reported being intimidated and bullied at school. And again, this is statewide. I mean, this is, this is not like Painesville, you can break it down and we do have that data. But students who are in the LGBT community are three times as likely as their cisgender peers to have seriously considered suicide and four times as likely have to attempt it suicide. Again, these are really alarming data points. But we have this data so we can start to do something that MSBA has already provided some guidelines. And so I just wanted to learn more about what they're recommending, what other students are doing, how they're addressing some of these issues. And then I also went to a session that was provided from a legal standpoint and they just went through case-by-case situations and scenarios on what districts are doing, just so I could become more educated on kind of where the state of Minnesota is at. They talked a lot about the Minnesota Human Rights Act, which basically every Minnesota is a protected class and that regardless of how you feel about these situations or not even situations, but how you feel about this issue, you can't discriminate. So there's policies in place for that. And then we talked a lot about the Safe and Support of Minnesota Schools Act. And one thing that they said, like when it comes to the LGBTQ community is making sure that all staff are educated and not that within a district, you're like having students talk to one person, you know, about, oh, just go talk to that teacher who knows something about it, but that this should be something that we are all educated on. Gosh, I have so many notes. I went to so many things. This is right up my alley. But yeah, that was kind of high level of the different things that I participated in, I'm trying to learn about things that maybe we aren't talking about as much. So next person can go.
I'll jump in here. Yeah, I won't quite go into the details Maggie did, but much like Bruce, I did spend some time on the, with strategic planning and then some superintendent reviews and that, you know, it was kind of nice just to see some of that. The second year now, board member, just kind of how my perspective of the conference was coming into it now and, and be able to plan a little bit more ahead and knowing things that we did over the last year and how I want to adjust my time at the conference. Spent some time with Minnesota State High School League, which they talked a lot about the end of, you know, winter sports and the beginning of spring sports, which we know now, you know, as Matt, Max discussed. You know, it's all up in the air. So it's all changed again and it kind of makes me chuckle a little bit, thinking about how our perspective will be going into it next year in 2021 now with having to deal with distance learning and things that at the conference, we didn't even have an opportunity to ever dream that we would ever be exploring as we, as we sit here today. So I just wanted to, just a quick side note from earlier conversations. So I have a brief floor to talk. I do want to say thank you to Matt, Dave and Mary. I've talked to a number of teachers and from both Painesville and other districts. And I do know that there is some, you know, decent conversation amongst the teachers that they feel very supported within what we're doing. Here's a school district, so, you know, I, I just, for myself and I imagine most rest of the board, thank you for all the work you've done so far. For our teachers and our students, it's, it's very, very much appreciated and we look forward to hopefully getting back to school this year, this year yet though.
Okay, can I talk? Come on. Okay. Well, I went to a couple of different sessions. One was on open meeting laws, which was interesting. They never even touched on what we're doing tonight, how that develops, but I'm sure that'll be more discussion about these kinds of school board meetings. But so that was just interesting on some of the legalities there. I went to a session on education standards, especially for arts, physical education and science and what is being proposed there. And the thing I came away with from that session is that everybody thinks that their area is extremely important and, and we need to have requirements for each area, which just keeps adding more and more. So I know this is all speculation right now, but there were some interesting things coming, especially from the arts people who want to add more requirements to the, to some of the classes and things like that. So that's all still up in the air. But the most interesting one I went to was one on current and future trends in education, especially in terms of technology. And the shifts that have gone on and how a lot of people still haven't made some of the shifts, at least in their minds. One of the interesting things that was mentioned in this regard, especially in terms of technology, is that right now, it's like we're, we're flying the airplane, but we're still building it. We, we're trying to put it together and yet we still have to move forward with what we have. And so we're kind of in that transition era right now and boy, we certainly are now with what's going on with our education. So I think that's about it. I'll turn it over to Cheryl.
Thank you, Rick. I went to several, there is so much to be had down there. There, there are so many different areas that you can delve into and so many different exhibits and salespeople that talk to you. There is just a font of information. So it's a wonderful trip down there and I really thank the administration for lining everything up for us. I went to several presentations on bid law. It was an area that I was not, I didn't have a lot of information on. I didn't understand it totally. There is a lot more to bid for schools than there is for any other area. You can't just put it out on the, in the newspaper and expect it to come in. That was really eye-opening to me. I also did some research into administrative contracts and what should and shouldn't be in them. And it was kind of a review for me, but it was interesting and, and reminded me of what we need to do with the contracts that are coming up. The superintendent evaluations was another area that I looked into. And strategic planning seems to come first. And I'm kind of with Bruce on that, so I won't go into that too much because we kind of hit the same areas for that one. The exhibit hall and demonstrations took up a lot of our time. There are so many people to talk to there. We looked into air quality devices and got a lot of information on the air quality that we're looking into. That, that really caught my interest in kind of the tests and controls. And when I got home, I did a lot of research online, so I'm learning a lot yet on that. The, the one most interesting to me was playing by the rules, school board control of extracurricular activities. We are mandated by statute now to take control of the extracurricular activities. Before it was recommended or we could do it if we wanted to, but it wasn't, it wasn't something we had to do. But the Minnesota Legislature recently amended the law with respect to the obligation of school districts to take charge and control of extracurricular activities. This change imposes new obligations and potential liabilities upon school sponsorship of extracurricular programs. That was quite in detail and I grabbed a whole bunch of flyers for the, the other school board members. I guess I'm not going to go into a lot of detail on it, but it just, it covers a lot of things that we maybe didn't have to take care of before, but we probably did anyway. Coach hires, background checks, liability and insurance. Reasonable care of equipment. We talked about a lot of lawsuits and potential liabilities that could come from equipment. Harassment and bullying is covered in there, Title IX. Transportation by and of the students was covered in depth. Something that really came out was what kind of control we have to take over our booster clubs. That was an eye-opener to me too. I don't know. I just, I really enjoy going down there and some of the things that we see are just repeat. But it gets kind of enforces what we're already doing and tells us that we're doing it correctly or incorrectly. And that's about all I have, but I thank you all for sending me. It was, it's a great education and I'll pass it on to the next.
Jake's not here. He was at the conference, but Ashley, do you have anything to add?
I wa, I couldn't go, so no.
Do you have anything for the roundtable in general?
Nope, I'm good.
Any other closing comments? Otherwise with that, we made it through our agenda and we will conclude the meeting now.
I have one more thought or I comment, you're probably already doing this, is that if this type of distance learning happens again, which it may, how are we evaluating like how it's going so that as we implement next time that we just make it smoother? I mean, I don't imagine this is one and done. I hope it is. But I, I, I don't know. I mean, I'm just thinking, how do we track and document like, okay, here's what we learned, here's how we're doing differently. You probably already are doing that, but that's just one of the things that I think about is make sure that we're closing that loop so that if we do have to implement again, we're just that much farther ahead with lessons learned.
Yeah, good question, Maggie. And it's been interesting because it's, it's been a, the whole experience has been interesting and, and it's a learning experience. And so to say that things have gone as expected or as we were planning, I think some of them have and some of them certainly have been eye-opening experiences. We are, I think either Mary or David did allude to the fact we are working right now on a survey that we are going to have students participate in and families participate in. But I will just express my opinion on distance learning. And the fascinating piece that, that I have noticed is this time period that we are in distance learning has solidified everything that I thought was true about developing a school system that's student-centered. Because we have some students that absolutely can excel and exceed and flourish in distance learning. And we have other students that need to have that space, that connection, that brick and mortar, that location. And both of those need to be acknowledged and okay ways to learn. And what's fascinating is, is we've really immediately swung the pendulum. You know, before we were very traditional, very brick and mortar, very maybe teacher facilitated direct instruction. And now that pendulum without any of our control is really, it's done a 180. And I think that what it just means to me is it just drives home the point that we need to be a system that is responsive for all learners on that spectrum. And so what I'm hearing and what makes me most excited is to be able to visit with teachers that are so excited about what they're trying to do right now because they're forced to do it and how they could incorporate an element of that into what they were doing in the past. And to me, that is really where the magic is going to be. Because I think we have a golden opportunity to really reinvent a system that is truly designed for all. And unfortunately, I think this experience where we were just thrown into a distance model, in the end, it could be the catalyst for something that is really, really powerful for our school system. So we are doing some of those things, Maggie. We are going to be doing some survey and some stakeholder survey. Students as young as fourth graders, all the way up through our seniors are going to be participating in the survey. Families will have an opportunity as well. And yeah, we're going to gather input and we're going to gather information. But to me, what has really been driven home is we need a piece of our distance learning system needs to be available for all kids. Is it right for every kid? No, it's not. Is it right for every circumstance? Of course not. But that doesn't mean that we can just say, you know what? We were forced to do distance learning. Now we're going to go back to our traditional model. And it's not to say that everything with our traditional model is wrong and ruined. That's not what's coming of this, but it truly needs to be. We've now broadened our horizon and it needs to be something that we can hold on to for those kids that really do excel in it. So I'm personally, I'm really excited about it. But again, yeah, it was a huge learning curve and we continue to learn every day. And I'm curious to see what we get for feedback when those surveys go out as well. Anything else before we finish? All right, well, you have successfully completed your first remote meeting. So thank you. And the meeting will be on the YouTube channel, probably sometime tomorrow or the next day.